Okay, great. Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, February 28th. That's where we're searching for a missing individual. Ask for a special blessing to be sure to find them and all the other. Finally, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
For which it stands, one nation.
Miller?
Here.
Rosato?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Janzett?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah? Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Ewer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Very good. We have the necessary quorum. Uh, moving then to item four, the reminder that please speak into the microphone for BATV, BATV. Islamic Council announcing support for the Syrian earthquake victims, and they've decided they need to get those things better well-directed with the Batavia Ministerial Association. So they plan to be here for the next city council meeting. They are not quite ready to... I think a lot of it depends on, you know, where items should be sent and dropped off, and they're trying to get all that so it's fully understood by everybody. So we're going to take that one off the agenda. And does anybody else in the council have any items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda? I guess we don't have any. So moving then to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda, and Alderman Janzett, do you have that under governmental services?
Yes, I do, Your Honor. The consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the building reports for January 2023, Plan Commission Minutes for January 4th, January 18th, and February 1st, 2023. Approvals: The February 17th, 2023 payroll in the amount of $962,632.27. The accounts payable check registry in the amount of $3,678,031.1. Approval: Class A liquor license application for Puzzle Minds Batavia LLC, DBA, JT's Tavern and Tap, Ordinance 23-5. Amending the zoning code, Batavia City Code Title 10. Resolution 23-24-R: Authorizing purchase of spider crane, the wastewater treatment plant from Smiley Living Solutions for $93,200. Resolution 23-25-R: Approving Task Order Under 30 with RJM Group for Construction Engineering Services for the Randall Road Lift Station not to exceed $78,300. Resolution 23-30-R: Authorizing execution of amended Task Order 23 with Engineering Enterprises for construction engineering services related to the water treatment plant rehabilitation. Ordinance 23-3: Declaring surplus property electric transformers. Ordinance 23-6: Amending the 2023 wage and salary ordinance. Resolution 23-28-R: Authorizing execution of contract with V3 Construction Group LCV for the 2023-2025 maintenance of naturalized areas. Resolution 23-23-R: Authorizing execution of a one-year renewable contract with WA Management for the 2023 Westside Property Management not to exceed $93,549.89. Resolution 23-31-R: Authorizing execution of Task Order Number Three with V3 Companies LCV to save up for school project land surveying and concept engineering. Resolution 23-32-R: Abating $392,800 for tax here-to-for levied for the tax year of 2022 to pay debt service on $9,120,000 in go-bonds for that refunding Series 2013 for the city of Batavia, Kane and DuPage County, Illinois. Resolution 23-33-R: Abating $1,491,850 for the tax here-to-for levied for the tax year 2022 to pay debt service on $22,570,000 of go-bonds for that refunding Series 2015 for the city of Batavia, Kane and DuPage County, Illinois. Resolution 23-34-R: Abating $411,206.26 for the tax here-to-for levied for a tax year 2022 to pay debt service on $6 million in go-bonds Series 2017, city of Batavia, Kane and DuPage County, Illinois. Resolution 23-35-R: Abating $694,400 for tax here-to-for levied for the tax year 2022 to pay debt service on $3,195,000 in go-bonds that's refunding Series 2019 for the city of Batavia, Kane and DuPage Counties. Resolution 23-36-R: Abating $258,400 for the tax here-to-for levied for the tax year 2022 to pay debt service on $4 million on go-bonds Series 2020, city of Batavia, Kane and DuPage County, Illinois. Resolution 23-38-R: Authorization to execute a settlement agreement and release of all claims between Williams Brothers Construction, Inc. and the city of Batavia. Resolution 23-22-R: Approving an IGA with Fermi Research Alliance LLC and the Department of Energy Fermi Site Office for the supply of public water service. Resolution 23-37-R: Authorizing execution of notice of award to Brand Excavating, Inc. for lead service line replacement project. Your Honor, I approve the consent agenda as read.
Second, move by Alderman Janzett, second by Alderman Wolf, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Before we vote on it, for anybody just watching on TV or is in the audience, I would just like to say this is a lot of government we just talked about here. But if you were here last Tuesday night, you could have sat through a four-hour meeting as they went item by item by item that Alderman Wolf was running the committee of the whole meeting, and they got all this stuff discussed in full detail. So it's not like we're sitting here blindly voting on this. I would like to point out that the one item is 23-35-R, which is the $694,400, and that is the bond payment that we owe on the building of the new fire stations 14 years ago in Batavia. And I just want to point out to anybody that's listening that when Batavia built the two new fire stations, it's never cost any property taxpayer any money for either one of those buildings. The developer of the subdivision right behind the East Side Fire Station donated the land for that station, and the folks down at Mooseheart donated the land where the West Side Fire Station stands, and both of them were no cash to the city required. So we got all this nice property. And about that time, we became a home rule community, and we were able to have a referendum in which we got people to agree to a two-cent sales tax that was then charged on everything going on in Batavia. And we told the folks at the time if they would approve this sales tax, we would issue, I don't know, was it 14 million in bonds or 10 million in bonds to build the fire stations. But we thought the sales tax would make the bond payment every year, and we're very pleased to report that it has. So we've never, you've never seen a fire station on any part of your property tax bill. So I'm bragging a little bit here, but this should be pointed toward the Finance Department of the city government under Peggy Koby because she does a wonderful job of keeping us kind of in the black here and keeping us out of the red and really making sure that the city... And there's several other of these things that we just acted on that are other property tax issues that were refunded through various sources of revenue that we get. So right now, the city of Batavia, braggingly, I will tell you, has one of the lowest property tax rates for the city's portion of your property tax of any city in the immediate area. And I could start talking about my neighbors and saying how much they have, but it's way, way more than what we are charging for ours. And so we're at 73 cents currently on the tax bill, and a lot of our neighbors are a lot more than 73 cents, and that's just for the city's portion of your bill. But by the city keeping ours down, then people's property tax bills aren't as high as they potentially could be. So we're doing hopefully some good things here, but I'm very proud to be able to sit here and say this. So with that out of the way, I guess I would ask the clerk to call the roll on the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Consent agenda is approved. Thank you very much. Moving to item number seven is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. I don't know of any public here that I see that's here to talk about something else. Item number eight is the Batavia Islamic Council requests for public support for the Syrian air- earthquake victims, and we've just already announced we're going to postpone that for the next meeting. So the next thing is item number nine, which is the 2023 post-prom donation. Now, just for those of you who are new on the city council, what happens here, and I'm going to ask Chief Lozer if he'd join me up at the podium. A few years ago, a very wise city council that we had and the police department that we had came up with the idea that the city of Batavia does go out and checks several times a year if any bar or restaurant has gotten letting any minors in to do anything. And unfortunately, some do, and so they get caught. So then, as the liquor commissioner, I immediately imposed probably a minimum of $500 fine on them. And we have built up a little bit of a pot of money from that fine opportunity. And so when we did this many years ago, the city council said, well, we think that the money from the fines should be put to some good cause that would hopefully keep the younger people from town from getting themselves involved in alcohol and drugs at an event. And so the ladies we have sitting in the audience who are going to join me at the podium here in just a second are the committee at the moment that is planning the Batavia High School post-prom party for May of this coming year. And so I'm very pleased. I'm going to give the chief a check for $3,000, which is the vast majority of the fines that we've, as liquor commissioner, that I've levied this year to people who didn't know any better. And so it's all the money's going to the post-prom party. So Chief, you want to meet me? And ladies, if you'd come up to the podium.
Got a microphone right there. Yeah, I'd just like to say this event is very unique, and it's a, for those that aren't aware, it's a very safe and fun environment for which the upper class and the juniors and seniors head to Funway after the prom is over and have an opportunity and obviously a safe environment to win various prizes, obviously play all the games, do all the fun activities that they can do down at Funway. So it obviously keeps kids out of trouble. So and I know that this event is also open, I believe, for juniors and seniors that don't go to prom, but they can buy tickets to the event, which is outstanding. So just wanted to say thank you for providing that opportunity for the kids in the community and heard a lot of good feedback and a lot of fun that happens at the event. So thank you very much. With that being said, I'd like to present you with this $3,000 check, and thank you for all that you guys do, and much appreciated.
And on behalf of the community, I just want to thank you three for what you're doing. And secondly, thank Bob Hanson and those folks down at Funway for opening up their place and working with you because it creates a very unique and fun-filled environment to do something like this. So this is a winner all the way around as far as I'm concerned. And I hate to say that I hope more people misbehave next year so we'll have money to give you, but that's how we go about raising this. So and with, what do we got, 46 licenses, I think, in town in hours?
There's a lot.
Lot, yeah. So there's going to be some chances that we'll get some more money here. So thank you.
I'll just say really quickly, thank you so much for giving us these funds. And the kids, we love to hear the responses from the kids after the night. We've learned quite a bit over the years. This crew that we have is going to be in place for the next four years, I believe, and then some. So we just make it better every single year. And like I said, the kids just, they have a blast. So I think we had 600 last year in attendance. So that's pretty amazing. It could be some of the gifts that they get for the raffle, but they keep on coming back. So we really, this goes a long way, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, we will then move to Main Street?
Hi, thank you all for having me again this evening. I have just a few quick Main Street updates for you. First, we wanted to thank the city so much for supporting Restaurant Madness that is coming up March 5th through the 9th, and we have 38 restaurants participating this year. We've begun promotions for that with the videos that are being posted on our social media as well as some posters and rack cards around town. So we're looking forward to people eating locally that weekend, hopefully continuing throughout the rest of the year. The applications for our farmer's market and our artisan collective opened February 1st. They have been going, it's been going really well so far. We have well over 100 applications for those markets so far. So we're just looking forward to during those and another really great outdoor market season. Our boardwalk shop jury met earlier a few weeks ago, and we'll be announcing our 2023 selected shops probably sometime early next month. We have one of our 2022 shops, Arlo Hendricks, which just recently moved into the Wilson Street Mercantile, so they are now in brick and mortar. Hazelry, which was the women's clothing shop from 2022, opened to brick and mortar a few months ago in Glen Allen. You can find Magnolia Soap Products in Light and Pine Collective, and also the Candy Stop has a place at Red Hive. And you can get Wonder and Wander sensory jars at Limestone. So we have lots of great, we've seen a lot of support from the downtown merchants to the 2022 boardwalk shop vendors, and that's been really exciting to see since there's not a ton of brick and mortar space available right now for them to move into. And then lastly, we have Egg Hop coming up on April 8th. We're partnering with the Congregational Church for that event this year, and we do have a few volunteer opportunities still available as well as a few sponsorship opportunities available. So we just asked that if you know anybody that might be interested, you send them our way. Does anyone have any Main Street questions for me?
Questions, comments, observations?
I'll just say...
About the indoor market?
What was that?
Don't forget about the indoor market over on First Street.
As somebody who now sits on the board, you and Beth are just doing an incredible job with Main Street. So, and as a business owner.
job with Main Street, so, and as a business owner. Like, I get to see both sides of it, so thank you so much.
Really wonderful job. Thanks. All right.
Thank you. Keep up the great job. All right, moving to item number 11, which is Resolution 23-026-R, awarding a downtown improvement grant to Geneva Winery for 5 through 9 North River Street. Who's got this one?
I've got this, Alderman Wolf. Thank you. Yes, this is a downtown improvement grant for 5 through 9 North River Street for the Geneva Winery, new tenant moving in, and they're doing quite a bit of work there. And Anthony up here to explain a little bit, because the owner was not able to be here tonight.
Thank you, Alderman Wolf, and thank you, mayor and council. As Alderman Wolf mentioned, they are going to be doing about $60,000 plus of work for 5 through 9 North River Street, and some of that work includes construction that's directed to interior remodeling, removing walls and moving doors, updating plumbing, and building a wine bar, in addition to many other operations that's going to be outlined in the application packet itself. One of the things I do want to highlight, and I highlight this at the February 14th Committee of the Whole Meeting, is that Geneva Winery opened their first winery in September of 2020 during a pandemic, and this was in Geneva. At that time, sales continued to grow, and they were able to open. And so with this success, they basically mentioned that they proposed that the success has been looking at the best locations and choosing locations with strategy that would be effective for their business model. That being said, they chose their second location very carefully. They decided to choose 5 through 9 North River Street, right here in Batavia. Why? Because it is a very similar location to Geneva. It has a strength that suits their business model, and it's an outstanding fit for the community as a whole. So tonight, what we'd like to do is recommend that city council approve Resolution 23-026-R, awarding its downtown improvement grant to Geneva Winery in the amount of $25,000 or 50% of the total project cost, whichever is lesser of the two amounts. And again, I'm very excited about this grant and excited to have Geneva Winery enter the community of Batavia. I'm sure they're going to do great things as part of our community.
Look forward to another addition on River Street, so just another option that we don't have down there, so that'll be nice. Questions? If not, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 23-26-R, awarding a downtown improvement grant for Geneva Winery at 5 to 9 North River Street in the amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second. Move by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Malay, for the approval of ordinance, let's see, which one is this, 23-26-R? Any comments and questions from members of the council? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet? Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved.
Wonderful, thank you, council, mayor.
All right, moving then to item number 12, which is Resolution 23-029-R, the Batavia Police Department adoption of a 10 shared principles. Chief Mazur, you're going to tell us about this?
Yeah, again, I'm very pleased with the discussion that we had at the Joint Committee of the Whole Meeting last Tuesday. This, again, for your recollection, is a, there are 10 shared principles that were forged out of meetings between the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police and the NAACP back in 2017. And like I had explained last Tuesday, these are principles that I believe are already, you know, ingrained and interwoven within what we're already doing. There's always room for improvement and things that we need to get better at, and I think, as I read through these 10 shared principles again, it's again something that we need to be, as police, intentional about, and again, don't want these to be just words on paper. Does anybody have any questions about them? If not, I will go into reading the resolution. Where, no questions? Whereas on March 22nd, 2018, the NAACP Illinois State Conference and the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police agreed to 10 shared principles designed to build trust between law enforcement and communities of color, and whereas the two statewide associations vowed by mutual affirmation to work together and stand together in other communities and at the state level to implement these values and principles, and to replace mistrust with mutual trust wherever, whenever, and however we can. Now be it therefore resolved that the Batavia, Illinois Police Department adopts these 10 shared principles as their own, and thereby adds its name to this historic agreement between the Illinois NAACP and the ILACP. These are the 10 shared principles. Number one, we value the life of every person and consider life to be of the highest value. Number two, all persons should be treated with dignity and respect. This is another foundational value. Number three, we reject discrimination toward any person that is based on race, ethnicity, religion, color, nationality, immigrant status, sexual orientation, gender, disability, or familial status. Number four, we endorse the six pillars in the Report of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. The first pillar is to build and rebuild trust through procedural justice, transparency, accountability, and honest recognition of past and present obstacles. Number five, we endorse the four pillars of procedural justice, which are fairness, voice, i.e. an opportunity for citizens and police to believe that they are heard, transparency, and impartiality. Number six, we endorse the values inherent in community policing, which includes community partnerships involving law enforcement, engagement of police officers with residents outside of interactions specific to enforcement of laws and problem solving that is collaborative and not one-sided. Number seven, we believe that developing strong, ongoing relationships between law enforcement and communities of color at the leadership level and street level will be the keys to diminishing and eliminating racial tensions. Number eight, we believe that law enforcement and community leaders have a mutual responsibility to encourage all citizens to gain a better understanding and knowledge of the law to assist them in their interactions with law enforcement officers. Number nine, we support diversity in police departments and in the law enforcement profession. Law enforcement and communities have a mutual responsibility and should work together to make a concerted effort to recruit diverse police departments. Number 10, we believe de-escalation training should be required to ensure the safety of community members and officers. We endorse using de-escalation tactics to reduce the potential for confrontations that endanger law enforcement officers and community members, and the principle that human life should be taken only as a last resort. So tonight, I would recommend that the city council approve Resolution 23-029-R, a resolution of the adoption of the 10 shared principles by the Batavia Police Department.
Oh, moved.
Second.
Move by Alderman Malay, second by Alderman Lehman. Any further discussion?
Yep, Your Honor, I would just like to make a comment. When I first saw this come across, I was very pleased to see it, and I just have to say, this speaks volumes for the leadership of the police department and the staff of the police department, and I'm proud that Batavia is signing out to this, these principles. Thank you, chief.
Else? I'd just like to second what Alderman Malay just said. I think it speaks wonders about how good our police department really is and how sensitive you are to the whims and wills and actions of the community, because, you know, no different to anybody else, Batavia's got a few loose cannons floating around here, but I think the police department identifies who they are, knows who they are, and tries the best they can to work with some of these folks so that they don't get themselves or us into any further troubles than they do. So that's one of the blessings and virtues, I think, of having a smaller community. You can kind of comb over the place and figure out who may be somebody you need to work extra hard to keep in line with. So I appreciate that very much. I know you do that. Kirk, call the roll then.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Good. Thank you, chief.
Thank you again, council and mayor.
Okay, you're still up here. You get the next one, too. Moving to item number 12, which is adoption of 23, Resolution 23-29-R, Batavia Police Adoption. No, no, sorry about that. Approval of the waiver of formal biddings for the in-car video cameras. Chief?
Bidding process for, the formal bidding process for the purchase of in-car camera systems.
Second. Move by Alderman Malay, second by Alderman Wolf, that we waive the formal bidding process for the in-car video cameras. Any discussion? Chief, you want to tell us what we're doing so that anybody watching in the public can understand this?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is just continuing our program as far as bringing in the latest technology to be able to help us not only with transparency with the community, but also to help with prosecution through the state attorney's office as well as training. And what we're looking at doing is purchasing 11 in-car video camera systems, and these are made by G-Tech, which is currently the company that we're using for our body worn cameras, which is why we're requesting the waiving of the formal bidding. The product that we're looking at buying is going to integrate right in with current software that we're using. The tablets that we use in our squad cars are also G-Tech at this point, so it just makes sense to integrate the G-Tech product in there altogether. Looking forward to this, I think it's going to continue to show what our body worn cameras show, and that is that our officers are out there doing excellent work. It does, like I had mentioned a second ago, provide an opportunity for training. We use our body worn cameras frequently to go back. Our officers will look at the footage and, you know, maybe they could have done something differently, or maybe tactically, there was, you know, a different approach that they could have taken. So again, I think this is going to be one of those technologies that's going to not only increase our transparency, but it's going to be a really good training tool as well.
Do you have any questions for the chief before we vote? Not, Kirk, call the roll and the vote.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. All right then, moving to item 14, which is Resolution 23-012-R, authorizing the purchase of 11 Gitac VR-X20 in-car video cameras for an amount of $66,100. Chief, you want to make any comments about this one?
Yep. Just same, the previous vote was for the waiving of the formal bidding, which I appreciate, and then this will allow us to go ahead and move forward with this purchase, which I think actually did come under budget as well.
I move we adopt Resolution 23-12-R, authorizing the purchase of 11 G-Tec VR-X20 in-car video cameras for $66,100.
Second. Move by Alderman Malay, second by Alderman Connolly, for the approval of Resolution 23-12-R, authorizing the purchase of 11 in-car video cameras for $66,100. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved.
Thank you again, council. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, chief. All right, we obviously do not have an administrator's report tonight, as I explained at the beginning during my prayer, that she's not able to be at the meeting. So go to 16, do we have other business from the city council? Alderman.
I was happy that I saw the city posted about Culver's opening today, right? So it's going to be exciting to get over there and get some ice cream and burgers right down the street instead of driving out of town.
I could tell you all kinds of Culver stories about Batavia because I've been working with those folks, and this past Friday, they invited all the city employees over for lunch, and that was so that they could test their staff to see if they could deal with an overwhelming crowd that hit the door. And then yesterday, they had a same thing for all their staff members' families, so they fed them all. And I went on Friday, and I walked in, and one of the, there's three owners to this place, a daughter and her husband, and the main owner who lives in Madison, Wisconsin. And I walked in, and the daughter, who's one of the owners, says, are you going to be able to be here tomorrow? This was Sunday. I said, I, she says, my mother's coming down from Madison, Wisconsin, and she wants to talk to you. So, okay, so I said I'd be there, so I goes out there, and she was telling me all about, they worked an agreement, and a lot of people in town have noticed this, they didn't think that they had a big enough parking lot to begin with. Well, the deal that was made with Mr. Douglas, who owns the flooring place next door, is that they can use all his parking spaces, I think, with the exception of three, because that's how many he may need at any one time, because people come in and buy flooring by appointment, I guess, to some degree. So she's got, she says she's got some pretty good parking out there, but anyway, she was interested in that, and then she wanted to know, she had read her legal documents about when she bought the property, who owned the property, and so I went through with that about who were some of the owners of that property out there. And so then she says to me, she says, we've got all this vacant wall space, and one of the things that we think we need to do is put some unique Batavia pictures up on the wall. And she says, I'm told, pointing her finger at me, you may be the person that can help me get some unique Batavia pictures. So we started working on this. She had one particular request, which I found interesting, nothing wrong with it. Apparently, she's a big baseball fan and had always been a big fan of Craig Sager, who was a 1969 graduate of Batavia High School. And he, as most of you know, died of cancer a few years ago. And so he used to wear these brightly colored coats when he was on the air and all this kind of good stuff. But one of the things Craig did is he was working for Ted Turner in Atlanta many, many years ago, and he was in the dugout when Hank Aaron hit the homerun that broke Babe Ruth's record. And so he ran out on the field and chased Aaron around the bases and made some kind of a tape that has been played, I guess, at the Baseball Hall of Fame and other sporting events and whatever have you. And owner said, could she get a copy of the picture that we have at the city showing Sager with Hank Aaron at the, arriving at home plate when that all happened? So Lori and I are talking this afternoon, we're going to try to get her, there's several different pictures that we have, and we're going to try to get her one of those pictures. And another one that I told her I would try to get is back in, I don't know, 1987 or '86, we had a company that was spraying Batavia for mosquitoes, and they had a helicopter. And so Bob Popick, who was then on our staff, was a photographer, and he got the spraying company to agree to take him in the helicopter and go up in the air over Batavia and take some aerial shots. And I'm very glad he did this, because if you go up in my office, I have this one shot of the intersection at Fabian and Randall Road in 1987, and there isn't nothing there. I mean, there's a barn with some farm, little farm things on the corner in the northeast corner in Geneva, but the whole, it's, the picture's looking south, and it goes down Randall Road from Fabian Parkway down to about where Culver's now is, and there is nothing there. I mean, there's nothing. So I told her I'd try to get her a copy of that picture. So you'll probably, when you go back in there someday, you'll see this display of unique Batavia photography going on. So, I told her I'd try to get her a copy of that picture. So, you'll probably, when you go back in there someday, you'll see this display of unique Batavia photography going on. So, I guess I can report to you on that. Have any other questions, Alderman Miller, about it, or?
That's going to open, and I can get some kids some ice cream.
Okay. Well, then, let's go to 17, the mayor's report, and I won't talk very long, because I know you all want to get home and get out of here. We've had, last week's meeting was four hours, and so that was, you did your due diligence at that time. One thing I did want to kind of bring you up to date on is, is that, as most of you know, I don't know, about four or five months ago, the Dunham Foundation in Aurora gave the city of Batavia a grant for $75,000 to do a history story about Batavia's history. And when we outlined it to them of what we had to talk about, they said, "This is fabulous. You know, there aren't many towns that have all this going on." So, right now, there's a group of us, Laura and I are on it, and we're in the process of designing and wording signs that will be put up, and one of them we've already worked on, I think we got it resolved, is the Bellevue Place on South Jefferson Street, where Mary Todd Lincoln was a patient for four months in 1875 after she'd been judged to be insane by a jury in Chicago. So, we're going to tell that story. She didn't stay long, four months, and then she got released to go live in Springfield with her sister. But while she was here, one of the things, and we're debating this now, if we're going to put this on a sign, one of the things that happened while she was here, two things kind of happened. Number one, in eight, this is 1875, and this is before electricity or, you know, cars or anything, and in the medical records on Mary Todd in Batavia, in those four months, she complained, quote-unquote, about the noise in the neighborhood. And you have to ask yourself, what could be the noise? And there was not even electricity to make a record player or a car or anything go. Well, if you do your mind on history, 1875 was four years after the Great Chicago Fire of 1871. And one of the big booms in Batavia was, is that we had 11 stone quarries in town south of the Wilson Street Bridge, the biggest one being on the west side of the river where the Quarry Park is. And they, we had railroad tracks that ran right alongside the river to pick up things of some weight, and so this was the ideal place to get down and mine that quarry out and haul all that stone down to the railroad track, and then load it on the tracks and ship it to Chicago to rebuild the city after the fire. Well, make, hauling all that, beating on all that stone, and I think they dynamited some of it to loosen it up, that was the noise in the neighborhood that Mary Todd Lincoln was complaining about. So, the other thing that was noted is, is that Mary Todd Lincoln was put in a horse-drawn carriage with some regularity while she was there, and they rode her around the streets of Batavia in this horse-drawn carriage. And it, word got out that Mrs. Lincoln was in this, and of course, this was a, you know, a town that was very much in favor of doing away with slavery, and the abolitionists kind of controlled the place. And so, Mrs. Lincoln had, you know, thanks to the work of her husband, she had a lot of supporters in town, and so they used to say that, when the word got out that Mrs. Lincoln was coming down the street, people would run out to their garden, and they'd cut a nice bouquet of flowers, and then when the wagon came by, they'd run out and stop the wagon and give Mrs. Lincoln these bouquet of flowers. And then, other days, people would speculate, "Well, she wasn't here yesterday or the day before, so she should be here today." So, then they would go bake a pie or cookies or something, and then here comes Mrs. Lincoln in the wagon, and they'd run out and stop, and she'd get a pie or something to take back to Bellevue for herself. And supposedly, she made some comments before she left about what a wonderful, friendly town this is by just riding these residential streets. And I think it's something we need to note on the history plaque, because, you know, we got all these people, I assume that most of Mrs. Lincoln's writing was on the residential streets of the west side of Batavia, whether it's Lincoln or Washington or Jefferson, Jackson, Houston, all those places, that people today would read that and say, gee, Mrs. Lincoln came by my house all these times, and my forbears gave her stuff to eat or smell or whatever. So, I just think that's kind of a local touch that kind of brings history right to Batavia back today, so we're talking about that. Another one that we got, and I think this is a fabulous story. In 1919, the U.S. Army convened a convoy at the orders of Judge, uh, Judge, President Woodrow Wilson, to take a ride from Washington, D.C. to San Francisco and try to make a route for a cross-transcontinental highway across America. And they kind of knew where they wanted to do it, but there was no highway built there, so they put an army contingency together, I believe of 79 vehicles and 270 military people, many of them were contract construction people, engineers and whatever. And so, they left Washington, D.C., and it took them 62 days to drive across America in this convoy. So, in August of this year, or was it April? Anyway, they, they got to Chicago, and they got down on, stopped south of the city at Chicago Heights, and they spent the night there, and when they spent the night someplace, they would put, had some light systems, searchlights and that, so they do a show for the residents in town of the searchlights in the sky. People would break, bring food over to them, and they ate very well supposedly. So, when they left the Chicago Heights, I think it was May, uh, August 15th, maybe, they left, they were going to try to get to DeKalb that same day. Well, they got there, but it took them 10 and a half hours to go from Chicago Heights to DeKalb on this particular day. So, they came up Route 30 to Aurora, and then they got on what was proposed to be Route 31 going north out of Aurora. And when they got up north and north Aurora, there was Mooseheart. Now, Mooseheart was a big thing then, because it had just been founded, and there was like 2,000 kids living in it down there. So, they stopped the convoy for a couple minutes, and they did some stuff out in the street, showing the kids how the tank worked and all this other stuff. But then they got, just started going north on what today'd be Batavia Avenue, and they got to that hill down there that's south of the Moose Lodge. And the hill, so I'm told, was much steeper then than it is now. They've tapered it down and rebuilt it several times, but this, this thing was almost straight up in the air trying to get up on this. So, they took these 79 vehicles, and they go up this hill, and they got up to about where the Moose Lodge is, and the whole thing turned into this big steam affair. There was so much overheating of all these vehicles, for all the water that it shifted, that they, so they kind of lumbered up to Batavia, and they were looking for water to put into these vehicles, because they needed water. So, they got down to the West Side Cemetery, and the city public works director, whose name is Ally Perry, met them down there and said, "Well, we don't have much water in this cemetery. All I got's a big little spigot. But if you want to come up to Batavia Avenue and Wilson Street, which is only five blocks further up the street where our new high school had then been built in 1915, this was 1919, we have a horse-drinking trough that's right on the street that's connected to the water system, and I can open up that baby, and I can give you guys as much water as you need." So, they started up, got up there, and they get this out, well, they had these 79 vehicles, and they were backed up down Batavia Avenue, and then once they got them filled, they had to take them someplace north up the street, and I guess it created a real mess of traffic down there. So, there was this, now, there's debatable what the rank was. Some people say it was a captain, some people say it was lieutenant colonel, but there was this one army guy that got out in the middle of Batavia Avenue and Wilson Street, and supposedly stood there for 45 minutes and got this mess cleaned up so that he again could take the whole thing up to Geneva, and then they went out, Kessinger Road to DeKalb. Anyway, the guy in the middle of the street was Dwight D. Eisenhower, and he was on the, on this convoy. And of course, as we all know, knowing American history, Dwight D. Eisenhower became kind of the father of the interstate system, because he had been there for the beginning of it, and then had since been through situations like he dealt with in Batavia, so he knew that we needed to do something different and move in traffic. So, we have this memory of Dwight D. Eisenhower standing for 45 minutes at Batavia Avenue and Wilson, in the middle of the street or just south of the intersection. So, then Eisenhower becomes President of the United States, and the first one of the things he does is he creates the U.S. Space Administration and puts that into business. So, then we get to the election of 1960, and Eisenhower has to leave because he's got his two terms done. So, his opponent is John F. Kennedy. So, on October 28th, 1960, here comes John F. Kennedy down Batavia Avenue in his presidential campaign, and he started up at Atlee Stevenson's Farm in Libertyville that morning, and they had brought him down through Barrington and then into northern Kane County, and he just come, they came right down the Fox River on 31, starting in Carpenter'sville, and they stopped for lunch at the Baker Hotel in El, in St. Charles, and then they came down to Geneva, and they, Kennedy spoke in front of the courthouse, and I guess that was not a pretty scene. It was mostly Republicans up there, and they were yelling and screaming at him and everything else. So, they get him down to Batavia, and he wasn't going to stop, because it was, it wasn't on the schedule. Well, the principal at Batavia High School at the time was, they called him Duke Snyder, and he had an assistant principal, Bob Studdel, and they thought it would be good for these kids in the high school, there was almost 500 in the building, to see a presidential candidate. So, they made the decision, they're going to empty out the high school and let all the kids come out. Well, then the principal over at McLean School decided, "Well, if they're doing it at the high school, I'll empty McLean School out, and I'll let my kids come out there and see the candidate." And then Sam Rotolo was principal over at old Louise White at Washington State, he or the other two were going, so he emptied out Louise White School. And so, Kennedy gets down to the corner, and there's, I was there, there was easily several thousand, almost a couple thousand people standing in that intersection waiting to see him. So, lo and behold, they get to Batavia Avenue and Wilson Street, and there were so many people there, there's pictures of this, that they stopped the caravan, and Kennedy gets up on the back of the caravan and gives a speech for 1 minute and 43 seconds. I have a copy of the speech, so I can tell you how long it was. But what's kind of ironic is, Kennedy gets elected president, and the, one of the first things he does is put out the charge that the United States is going to land a man on the moon before the end of the decade of the 1960s. So, here you had the guy that started it, and here's the guy that really crowned it. And they both came to Batavia, and as near as we can determine, where Eisenhower stood and where Kennedy stood to give the speech was probably less than 40 or 50 feet apart. So, we have that kind of unique situation right there at the end. So, we're doing a sign somehow, we're still having conversations about how to word this sign, but it's, it's those types of things that I think, you know, instead of just saying, oh, so-and-so was here, or was born here, whatever, we're trying to do a little, so now they decided that once we get all these signs up, they're going to put it on a video program and then put it on the computer, so anybody, any place in the world can dial in and watch this history program of Batavia. So, we've got, you know, some other interesting things. We've got out on East Wilson Street, starting at 713, which is just to the east of where College comes into Wilson, there's a house there that in the late 1950s was lived in by a girl by the name of Sherry Meyer. Well, Sherry Meyer went to Batavia High School for two years and quit at the end of her sophomore year, and went off into the entertainment world and wrote the songs, "Put a Little Love in Your Heart, What the World Needs Now is Love," changed her name to Jackie D. Shannon, and she was the opening act for the Beatles' first tour of America in 1964. And she came out and warmed up the crowds before the boys came out and sang. So, she won the Grammy Award in 1987 for all her work in music. So, then if you go out to Redant and Wilson, where Bob Dazo has his, now his towing service, that used to be a, a farm supply warehouse called Feldot's. And it was still there in 1973, when 20th Century Fox came to Batavia, and they brought the actor Art Carney in, and he was making scenes for a movie called Harry and Tonto. And in 1975, Art Carney won the Academy Award for Best Actor for his portrayals in that movie. So, we got the Grammy Award and the Academy Award. Then if you go further out Wilson Street to the Speedway Gas Station, cross the street to the south of the Speedway, there's a big clump of trees. Well, back in that clump of trees is what they called the Phillips Farm, and the Phillips were people that owned much of the land right there around Wilson Street when Fermilab came in, so they lot, they got their house bought by the government. So, this is a real nice house. So, the government made the decision, whoever the executive director of Fermilab is gets to live in the old Phillips Farm. Well, here comes Leon Letterman, and he ends up becoming the director at the Fermilab, and he lived in the Phillips Farm for a while, and he ends up winning the Nobel Prize for Science for his work on the neutron. So, in about a seven-block run on East Wilson Street, we got the Grammy Award, the Academy Award, and the Nobel Prize. Now, that, that, I had, I'll never forget, I had the mayor of Rosemont here one day, Brad Stevens, and he had given a lot of the money for Batavia High School to get that turf field in, that's another old story, but I'm not going to bore you with it. But he, so he came out here to be there for the groundbreaking. So, I took him in the car, and I took him out East Wilson Street, and I said, "Let me show you my history here, Brad." So, I start talking about the Grammy Award and the Academy Award and the, and the Nobel Prize, and he says to me, "Well, Jeff, you know what I got up in Rosemont, but from a history perspective, you got me beat." So, I always laugh about that one when I think about it. So, you're going to see a lot of these signs, but I think there's going to be a lot of people very intrigued by the signs that we're going to be putting up in Batavia with all these stories that we got, and I just shared a couple of them with you here tonight. So, if you have people asking you about the signs, or you can think of some other thing that could be an interesting idea for a sign, let me know, and we'll run it by the committee. It's the Historical Society, the Library, the Park District, and the city are the ones that are kind of working as a committee to decide the signs and where they should go and whatever. Everybody's very receptive to putting the signs up. Everybody thinks, you know, this is bad history, this is not anything we have to be embarrassed about, or, this is good stuff. Another one is out on Walnut Street, it's almost out to the end, there used to be a greenhouse out there called Psychora's. And Psychora, Mr. Psychora was kind of a nationally recognized expert in raising the rose, and he, he raised roses, and he had a railroad track that ran right alongside his property out there, that when he got in the city council, Alan Wolf got us to get rid of the railroad tracks and build a walkway that goes from Walnut Street down to Augustin's School, that lots of kids use every day. But anyway, there was this railroad track that ran from the Northwestern in Geneva down to the Burlington in Aurora, and it went right by Mr. Psychora's greenhouse. So, he had a railroad siding put in there, and for a number of years, in November and October, he grew thousands of roses down in that greenhouse, and he loaded them all up on refrigerated cars, and they took them, took them out of Batavia down to Aurora and put them on the Burlington and went out to Anaheim, California, and they made up much, much of the roses for the Rose Bowl Parade, where it came out of Batavia. So, that's another story we're going to tell. So, I've talked too much, I don't mean to bore you, but I just, I just wanted you to know, because I think you're going to have some of your constituents say, what is with this sign program that's now starting, it's going to start to pop up, and you'll get a better idea of what this is all about. You want to make a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion for adjournment.
Um, all in favor?
Aye. Eight o'clock, right in the news.
Not bad. It's not bad.
Yeah, I got a.